All of that and just wait till he gets here to actually go into session.
So. Okay, just a reminder to, you know, provide your physical location when I do the roll. Councilmember Wilcox.
I'm present from Ypsilanti, Michigan and Washtenaw County.
Mayor Proton Brown.
Present Ypsilanti, Michigan, Washtenaw County.
Councilmember Somerville.
Present Ypsilanti, Michigan, Washtenaw County.
Mayor Richardson.
Present Ypsilanti, Michigan, Washtenaw County.
Councilmember Morgan.
Present Ypsilanti, Michigan, Washtenaw County.
Councilmember Simmons.
Present attending virtually from the city of Ypsilanti, Washtenaw County.
Mr. Jones Chance.
Present city of Ypsilanti, Washtenaw County.
With our president, there is a quorum.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan, it's good to have you in the city. The last few times you've been traveling.
Yeah, who are you telling? Glad that I could actually be here. I know it's virtual, but it's I'm still home. I like, I like. Yes, so even for the actually, I missed the last some YPAC meeting because I was actually on the road. And I'm not a good thing, but the last three or four meetings, but yes, I'm glad I can be sitting still highly attentive.
Very good. Okay.
Next item on the agenda council as agenda approval.
Their emotion.
Some move.
Or.
It's been moved and supported to that the agenda would be approved. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The ayes have it.
And the next item is for the closed session. Prior to Mr. Barr getting here, if I could just inform the person, the attendee list that we will be turning to close session for employee evaluation. So if you want to get off now and then rejoin at seven o'clock for the regular meeting.
They will be locked out of the meeting, right? If they choose not to leave.
Well, they choose not to leave, I have to remove them. And then I'd block the meeting, but I will let them know that if if you are removed from the meeting, it you would not be able to rejoin. If you, if you just exit, then then you'd be able to rejoin later.
Okay. Can you maybe reiterate that for them so they'll understand?
They're almost all gone.
Oh, they're gone. Okay.
There's only one left and then I'll just reiterate that once Mr. Barr arrives.
Okay, thank you. I just didn't want anybody to get locked out if they actually wanted to be.
Sure.
In the meeting. How was everyone's weekend? It's a holiday weekend. Did everybody enjoy? Whatever holiday you celebrate or if you don't.
It's beautiful.
I remember what I did this week.
Yeah, what happened on that?
I was gonna say, I don't know what I did this weekend. I think I caught up on work. And yeah, it kind of went by. My brother and I did sit outside and get dinner on Sunday night together.
Good.
Did we get a chance to talk about the MML conference? Did we get a chance to like to talk about some of the the classes that we attended and things of that nature? Well, because.
We have yet now, no, but if you would like to while we're waiting, please do.
I mean, no, I was dipping in and out of them because I was on the move, but I was I got some notes that I'd taken from, but um, it was um, one that I gotta find the notes, but um, I was in each in almost each one for like fifteen and nineteen minutes because I was bouncing around. So I didn't probably get a holistic viewpoint of all of them. But um, but I did listen to a few good ones. And then thank you for the city for uh, for allowing me to go. I I it is definitely not the same as in person. I tell you that. It's a lot of information to be sitting still. Annie, you may know this question. My daughter wants to take her cat to college and she want to get him registered as a therapy cat. I guess it's a process, you know, that this cat can start to get employed, I guess. So.
I think you have to get a doctor's note or something like that, but where's your daughter going to college?
Uh, she's um, she's leaning towards state.
I was gonna say Eastern, I think, is has a pretty good policy for therapy pets. I don't know about MSU.
I thought she was joking when she told me. I mean, I laughed in my face, but I had.
You have to get information from the doctor to document that it's necessary and needed. And then they send it to on the university and ask for those accommodations. Pretty sure state has accommodations for that, but she would have to present documentation showing that.
Yeah, I want to support her in that because I want the cat out of my house. I want.
Yes, the mental health professional would be better than the.
So much. I'm gonna ask follow up questions. Mayor Proton Brown, so stay tuned.
So is she going to state in September?
Well, she got accepted to Clark and Spelman and then U of M Dearborn and everywhere except her number one school, University of Michigan. After being in the Wolverine Pathways Program for four years, so she didn't get accepted. But uh, she got accepted to her number two through six and um, and it's plus state gonna give her the most money. So uh, I think she got a full scholarship, so I'm excited for.
She got a full scholarship to MSU.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Wow, that is.
My pockets it is. Yeah, right.
Yeah, and her future pockets. Holy, holy, that's really awesome.
Yeah.
Was Spelman gonna give her any money?
They were gonna give her a half scholarship. She had like two years there and she think Clark Atlanta. She got a full scholarship to U of M Dearborn. I'm like, it's still a U of M emblem, you know, still healthy. You get a second look at least, but you know, with state is pretty oh.
She'll get the full like college experience at state though for free. That's so awesome.
That's pretty cool.
We all cry.
Is back state was my choice way back, but um, it was all about the money back then. So I ended up going to Eastern.
They gonna find some way to suck some money out of me, don't you think they're not? So.
Oh, they will.
There's still, yeah, there's still other expensive, I mean.
Absolutely. So it's like, I didn't get the full, I just got the, just the one because I know the books and and room and board.
I mean, once she's there too, there's other scholarships that she can apply to that will help with books and stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's so cool.
So Annie, who I see your your shirt, it says Ramon.
Ramones.
Ramon.
Should I play a tune, Lois?
Let's create Bob.
It's a musical group.
It's um, like one of the OG like punk bands.
Oh, okay.
It's a boy band.
Yeah, Lois, you've probably heard many Ramones songs throughout the years on like commercials and on like soundtracks to films and TV shows.
Joey used to live in Ann Arbor.
Well, yeah, they played at the Blind Pig and other like various areas in like southeastern Michigan.
No, but one of them, as they got older, kind of retired, retired to Ann Arbor and you'd see him walking around the streets.
But Annie, to my defense, I never knew a lot of 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 names, of bands. I would hear their music, would love their music, would even, you know.
Yeah, that's fair.
I mean, that was even back way back in the day, you know, in my heyday, I just never paid. And my sister, she's always talking about, oh, this act, this actor, this actress or whatever and whatever. And I'm saying, I'm looking at her, so no, I just don't, I've never been.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like their work, but.
I'm sorry.
Go on, Jennifer.
So um, should we move it along or do we need Mr. Barr here? Because it's already twenty after and.
Yeah.
Because he can come tune in on at seven, I guess, unless we need to have him for a reason, although it looks like we did miss uh, Mayor Protem and um, the city manager. But anyway, just a thoughts, you know.
Yeah. Every time I've been to a, he's always been in.
Yeah.
The session, so I don't know what happened to them.
I think.
I get de facto, he's been present, but how necessary has he been?
I believe.
It's a liability.
It's necessary.
Okay, cool. Hey, I'm just asking a question.
Because like if there, I think the main point Anthony is because like it's closed session, so he needs to be there to make sure that we stay on.
Legalese.
Yeah, that we don't go out of the context of what our closed session is and.
I'm clearly.
The only way to verify that if someone were to say you were doing something wrong is if our attorney was there to say that we were actually on.
So this is clearly, but this is valuation, not questioning. Now, we're not, we're not under questioning here.
We still need an adult in the room. That's.
We do need an adult in the room.
But if we, so well, actually, I guess we just go until we're done, huh? Okay, well, all right. Never mind.
I would like to say, um, since we're just killing time. If you have not seen it and you have access to Lifetime. There was a new, a new film that came out Saturday, Mahalia.
Oh, cool.
I didn't get to see it. Um, I didn't get to see it Saturday, but I, Sunday night I did. It's very well done. Robin Roberts from Good Morning America is the producer. Did an excellent job. It's full of history, so.
Yeah, nice.
So did you see it?
Annie, no, I I'm a millennial, so I don't have cable. Um, but.
Counsel, I hate to interrupt. Mr. Barr is here, so you can move to go into closed session.
Okay, thank you.
I'm moving to the closed section. Good evening, Mr. Barr. Glad you can join us.
I apologize for being late. I had a miscommunication.
Was there support for that motion?
Or.
It's okay.
Mayor Proton Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville.
Yes.
Mayor Richardson.
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan.
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. There is still one person in the attendees list. Please, please leave and then rejoin at seven o'clock. I give you a few seconds. If you don't leave, I'll have to remove you.
Digital bouncer, Harden.
We'll just, okay, I moved to, are you, are you good, Andrew?
Yep.
Okay, I moved to, moved to open session.
Support.
It's been moved and supported to move to open session. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The ayes have it. Opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. We're now in open session. And um, Mr. Halinga, we turn it back over to you to lead us through this meeting, please. Thank you.
Right, counsel, the first item on the agenda is presentations. There is a proclamation honoring the two hundredth anniversary of Greece's independence. Go ahead and read that now. Whereas the city of Ypsilanti congratulates the Greek nation, Ypsilanti citizens of Greek ancestry on the occasion of the two hundredth anniversary, March twenty fifth, eighteen twenty one to March twenty fifth, twenty twenty one. Of the Greek declaration of war for independence and freedom after four hundred years of Ottoman occupation. And whereas common themes of the US and Greek history for fighting for universal freedom and liberty were won on battlefields, often against great odds with bravery and sacrifice, freedom or death. And whereas in eighteen twenty nine, our city name was changed from Woodruff's Grove to Ypsilanti in honor of the great Greek hero of the Greek War of Independence, General Demetrius Ypsilanti, after his defense of the Citadel of Argos, which he held with only two hundred and twenty soldiers against the Ottoman army of eight thousand and losing not one soldier and inspiring Philadelphians of the US for the, her heroism and particularly the Philadelphians of the city to change its name. And whereas the bust of the hero, General Demetrius Ypsilanti, by Greek sculptor Christopher Nastos of Athens, Greece, was dedicated to the city of Ypsilanti in nineteen twenty eight by the International Order of the American Hellenic Education and Progressive Association at their national convention in Ypsilanti and placed at the water tower near the flag poles of the American and Greek flags as a monument to the common ideals of the freedom and liberty and friendship between the two nations. And whereas the statue of Ypsilanti was restored with the cooperation of the city of Ypsilanti and the Order of AHEPA and was rededicated on March twenty fifth, nineteen ninety five. And whereas in nineteen ninety seven, the city of Ypsilanti officially became sister city with Napoli, Liam, Greece, the first capital of Greece. Therefore, be it resolved by the mayor of the city of Ypsilanti and the Ypsilanti City Council, we declare March twenty fifth, twenty twenty one as a two hundredth anniversary commemoration of the Declaration of Independence of the Republic of Greece as an expression of our gratitude for the many contributions of the Greek culture as a birthplace of Western civilization and democracy.
Thank you.
Counsel, the next item on the agenda is a public comment. For those on the attendees list, you'll have, if you'd like to make comment, please raise your hand and you'll have three minutes to address counsel. Wendy Cardy Saxon has their hand raised. I'll allow them to speak now and I will start the timer.
Hi, I'm Wendy Cardy Saxon, the Director of Real Estate Development at Avalon Housing. We're on the agenda later this evening for a purchase agreement for two oh six two ten North Washington. Just wanted to say that we're really excited to be at this point. We hope to get that purchase agreement approved and so we can be ready to dig in more into our due diligence. There are a few of us here from Avalon tonight and we're here to answer any questions if you have them and we appreciate your consideration. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good counsel, the next individual with their hand raised is Eric. I'll allow them to speak now. You have three minutes to address counsel.
Thank you, Andrew. Good evening, Mayor Richardson.
Good evening.
My name is Eric, my name is Eric Mays. I live at one zero zero four Sherman Street, uh, up, up by the water tower. I am just calling in tonight just to speak briefly about the proposal before the city council tonight with regards to the Ypsil Arbor Little League. We are hoping to install a new scoreboard or install a scoreboard up at Recreation Park. And I am just calling to ask for the city council's support on this issue. I know that has come before you guys before. I believe this is the last step in the process. Our pres, our league president, Nicole Wimmer is also on the call. So she's probably listening, but I just wanted to encourage the city council to continue to support the parks and the little league here in Ypsilanti. Uh, thank you, Andrew, and thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Counsel, that was the last individual with their hand raised. If anyone else would like to make comment, please raise your hand now. Anthony Williamson has her hand raised. I'll allow him to speak now.
Hello there, how are you guys?
Hello, Mr. Williamson.
All right, good evening. I am just, I just wanted to say that we are going to start to have Ms. Luvisa Brown and myself attend council meetings biweekly or when, uh, at least once a month just to keep the city informed and updating all the things that are happening at Park Ridge. I don't know if we did that on a regular basis and we just want to make sure that we are more proactive in having conversations with you guys. So each, you know, every other week, either myself or Luvisa Brown will be providing updates. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
If anyone else on the attendees list would like to make comment, please raise your hand now. Seeing none, if it's okay with counsel, to the consent agenda.
Yes, we can move to the consent. Thank you.
Resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti that the following items be approved. Resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero six five approving the minutes of March sixteenth, twenty twenty one. Resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero six six approving the purchase of election equipment. Resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero six seven approving the display of teal ribbons for Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the city of Ypsilanti.
Some move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported.
Okay, counsel, I'll call the rule now. Councilmember Somerville.
Yes.
Mayor Richardson.
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan.
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to the next section of the agenda, resolutions, motions and discussion. The first resolution, resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero six eight. It is resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti that whereas communities of color and especially Ypsilanti, Michigan are disproportionately impacted by COVID nineteen and black Americans continue to face the lingering effects of racism. And whereas we must work together to build, to continue to build a just Ypsilanti, free from prejudice, bigotry and racism. And whereas Ypsilanti, Michigan was a proud record of fighting bigotry, slavery and racism, including prior to the Civil War, being a part of the Underground Railway to help slaves to freedom and sending soldiers black and white to fight and die for the Union and the Civil War. Whereas Juneteenth, June nineteenth, eighteen sixty five marks when the final group of black Americans understood that they were free. When Union Army General Gordon Granger landed in Galveston where he read General Order Number Three, saying that all slaves were free and that former masters and slaves were absolutely equal in personal and property rights. And whereas Juneteenth, June nineteenth, eighteen sixty five, acting as the date of emancipation, became a longstanding day of celebration meant to honor black American resilience and the end of slavery. And whereas it is fitting improper for the city of Ypsilanti to honor and celebrate June nineteenth of every year as Juneteenth. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the Ypsilanti City Council that June nineteenth of every year, beginning in the year twenty twenty one and continuing for every year thereafter in perpetuity be and the same is hereby declared as Juneteenth, an official Ypsilanti city holiday.
A move.
I would like to.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Before we, I would like to just say that I proposed this resolution and it actually, uh, for years I've thought about it and I've talked with others that and uh, it was when, while I was attending virtually the National League of Cities Conference in March, and that conference is held every year in DC. And that during the National Black Caucus of Locally Elected Officials meetings, I began to hear city after city saying that they had adopted, uh, that they had declared June nineteenth as a holiday. And it was something that had been in discussion with some others that are members of the the Michigan Black Caucus of Locally Elected Officials. And so after much thought, I proposed this resolution and asked Mr. Halinga to, to form it and talked with Mr. Barr about it. I think this is something that is long overdue, not just here in the city of Ypsilanti and the state of Michigan, but it's something that's long overdue in this country. And I believe that as city by city begins to adopt and uh, and and declare June nineteenth as a holiday, the state, the country will soon get, well, I won't say soon, but will eventually get to that place where it will be a national holiday. I think it's an important day and I do know here in Washtenaw County, there has been considerable celebration in the for many, many, many years in the city of Ann Arbor. And but now we can say that we've got one up on Ann Arbor that now it is actually a holiday here. And the celebration in Ann Arbor was always not necessarily on Juneteenth, but it was on a Saturday close to the nineteenth. But I want to just encourage everyone on council to please support this, this resolution. And it will certainly propel us forth as a leader in the state of Michigan. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Wilcox.
I think this is great and and I agree that it's long overdue. What I would like to have just for the record in this meeting is that in the emails that were, they're passed around, there were two different designations for this. One is an actual holiday and one is just a day of acknowledgement. And I've wondered if we could have Mr. Barr speak to that. And just describe what the difference is.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, council member. The state of Michigan has declared this as a day of celebration, not a holiday. And the difference is if the city makes this a holiday, then that's the idea that this would be a day off for city employees. And I discussed this with the mayor and I believe that she was in favor of making this a significant event and making it a holiday. I think she discussed that a little bit. So the way this resolution is written, it will make it a holiday, not just a day of remembrance or celebration.
Thank you, and I will be supporting this as a full holiday.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Morgan, is that your hand up?
Yeah, um, I'm, I'm torn. I'm always torn when it comes to things of this nature. I mean, thinking about a celebration or a holiday versus a people who have, who writes, who are symbolic at best. And you're in a city that you think about, we want to acknowledge and we want to celebrate, you know, when I think blacks own less than one half or one percent of the city of Ypsilanti. And so when we're talking about, is, is, when we celebrate, are we talking about, what are we celebrating equity? Are we celebrating the ideal of us? I, I know we, you know, we, we, we talking about slave, but we really talk about being enslaved. I do think we want to recognize it, but I'm always I, I, we want to be celebrated and we want to celebrate our independence and these things. However, it's just always, I don't know if it's we're gonna give people a day off work to remember some of our struggles, but it's, it's, it's a beautiful thing. So I'm torn because I feel like I don't, I don't even have rights that we, we actually, it's hard to see them. And so I think a lot of these things are symbolic and um, and I appreciate them, but I just wanted to translate to something more material over time. Thank you.
I certainly understand what you're saying and hopefully that this will be a step towards us getting exactly what you were saying we don't have. Uh, councilmember Somerville.
Yeah, it's more of a, like an HR question is, so if this is a city, city holiday, it will be a paid holiday?
I, can I say, I think it would have to be negotiated as a, as a day off because right now we, although Veterans Day is a holiday, we work because we have negotiated otherwise so that we can have other things off. So I think it would not be an automatic day off, but would have to be negotiated. Am I right, Kim?
Yes, that's true for the different collective bargaining agree.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
I was just, yeah, that was mainly just, I'm, I'm thrilled to support this. I think this is a great thing for us to do. I just was curious about that.
Thank you, and thank you, city manager and Ms. Jones. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Halinga, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons? Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons? With six yes and one absent, the motion carries.
Thank you. And thanks to all of council that supported this. I think it's a, I, I see it as a big step forward for us as a city.
Council moving on to the next item on the agenda, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero six nine. It is resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti that whereas the United States of America, the state of Michigan, the county of Wasna, and the city of Ypsilanti, and indeed the world are in the midst of a medical COVID nineteen virus pandemic. And whereas the pandemic is a severe threat to the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the city of Ypsilanti. And the nineteen virus is spread by close physical proximity of persons. And whereas the city council and city boards and commissions have been meeting virtually because of the danger of contracting the COVID nineteen virus during in-person meetings. And whereas virtual meetings were authorized by Act two five four of the Public Acts of twenty twenty. And whereas Act two five four of the Public Acts of twenty twenty allows virtual meetings in case of a local emergency. And whereas Wasna County has declared a local state of emergency. And whereas the Wasna County Health Department statistics show that the city of Ypsilanti zip codes four eight one nine seven and four eight one nine eight had the highest rates of COVID nineteen virus infection in the county. And whereas Ypsilanti Mayor Lois Richardson has declared a local state of emergency in the city of Ypsilanti because of the continued COVID nineteen virus pandemic risk and danger. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Ypsilanti does hereby approve and adopt the state of emergency declared by the mayor and in accordance with Act two five four of the Public Acts of twenty twenty, determine and order that meetings of the Ypsilanti City Council and all boards and commissions shall be virtual until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, or until further action of the mayor and city council.
So move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Questions, comments, discussion?
I have a question for Mr. Barr. This question is when, when, when there is a national emergency, a state emergency, and now a local emergency, regardless of this based around virtual meetings, how relaxed does that make our charter? What powers does that give the mayor or the city manager? How does that affect us as far as being a government? And who's, are we under the, the direction and leadership of another agency while being in the state of emergency?
All right, yes, that's an excellent question, council member. The, all the powers of the city of Ypsilanti come from the city charter and some other miscellaneous laws. But all of that power comes from the state of Michigan. And so it's the state of Michigan that has the element power in this regard. However, the city charter does give the city all of the power that's allowed by law. And the city has passed a city ordinance for emergency situations that declares that the mayor can call, can call an emergency in emergency situations. So the state law and that the, the graverman in this situation is the Open Meetings Act. Because the Open Meetings Act, the state law, says that we have to have open meetings. But the state legislature changed that because of the COVID nineteen pandemic with the act that's referred to in this resolution. And so that act gives the city, because of the emergency and the county, the power to declare the emergency for the purpose that we've just indicated. Now, we have the, we have determined that. And if council approves this, then that emergency will continue. But we are still under the control of the state, and if the state changed the state law, then we could conceivably have to change this also.
Thank you, that was really clear and definitive. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you for asking that. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, would you call the roll? Was your hand back up, Mr. Morgan?
No.
Okay, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons? Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
With six yes and one absent, the motion carries.
Thank you. I think we made, I think we made the wise, a wise decision there, considering the fact that there is, has been and is, we're in the midst of a real upsurge in cases here in the state of Michigan. And I'm not sure exactly, I haven't spoken with the Health Department Director in the last week to know just how they're rising here within Wasna County or within the city. But I think it's wise to keep us all safe and, in, in talking with the mayor and, I mean, sorry, with the city manager and the clerk, it would cost the city a considerable amount to make our chambers usable. And then with the limits that the governor has put on indoor gatherings, we would still only have, be able to have approximately six residents attend the meeting. So I think we have made the right, right decision for us for this time, and I thank you.
Council moving on to resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero seven zero. Resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas the bridges on Factory Street and the Ford Street over the River in the city of Ypsilanti needs preventative maintenance repairs to extend the life of the bridge. And whereas OHM consulting engineers for the city of Ypsilanti completed the inspection of the bridges in the city and prepared inspection reports and other information on the above mentioned bridges. And whereas based on the findings and recommendations of OHM, the Director of Public Services recommends that the city make application to the Michigan Department of Transportation's local bridge program for bridge preventative maintenance. And as the city of Ypsilanti has available five percent portion of the project financing available, now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Ypsilanti authorizes the Director of Public Services and OHM to apply to the Michigan Department of Transportation's local bridge program with the application seeking financial assistance to perform preventative maintenance work on the Ford, the Ford Street and Factory Street Bridges.
So move.
Thank you, it's been moved and uh, and I see Mr. Akers here. Mr. Akers, you have some wise words for us?
I don't know about wise words, but I have just a quick summary. Good evening, council. The resolution is to authorize city staff to apply for an M dot local bridge program grant for rehabilitation work on the Factory Street and the Ford Street Bridges. We did apply for this grant last year for those bridges and the Ford Street Bridge, and we were awarded funding for the Ford Street Bridge last year. This grant, if awarded, would be for the twenty twenty-four program year and a decision will be made on the award funding in September of October of this year. That's essentially my summary. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Akers?
Just really quick. In your opinion, I know you haven't been in this position in this city, you know, as long as you probably would like to, and as long as you're going to be. But you said the bridge was construction and constructed in eighty-three, so in twenty-three, that'd be forty years. So every ten years, how much would you expect that we would, to spend a maintenance on a bridge?
It, I mean, I mean, it depends on the bridge and the condition of it, and, and there's a lot of factors that go into it. I, I mean, I can tell you for these two bridges, one was last rehabbed in two thousand nine and the other one.
That's twelve years.
Two thousand eleven. We're looking at half a million dollars worth of rehab work.
Okay.
As of right now, so the reason that is
Would you say, in your opinion, is it that much because it's been that long? Like if it was shorter intervals in maintenance upkeep, it'd be a less, or is that's the standard for bridges?
I mean, it's, it's possible. With, generally with roads and bridges, you spend less money the more frequently you maintain them. So if you do regular maintenance activities before they get to a certain point, it's generally costs less and you extend the life of the bridge from a cost benefit perspective. It, it makes more sense.
Last question I have is the one I always ask is, when is the deadline for the application and how much is the cost to apply?
Uh, well, the deadline for the application was April fifth, but they're letting us turn in our council resolution later. And it costs no money to apply. We are putting as a stipulation with the application, same as we've done in prior years, that the city would be willing to take on five percent of the cost. This tends to make our applications more competitive as they go through this program, because this is a very competitive grant to, to get.
If it's so competitive, why are we late on it? Was it not, like, if it's so important, why, why are we needing an extension? Let's go.
Oh, it's not an extension. It's actually very common for the municipal
Okay.
resolutions to come in a little later. So, so we actually turned in the application. But, but we have the resolution that needs to be tied into it. So, so this is relatively common.
Okay.
There was some confusion this year with regards to COVID as whether or not May first was the deadline, so. But anyway, we will, the application will get submitted.
Thank you. I trust that you own it, Mr. Akers. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I'd like to say this was one of those too, that we kind of got the notice a little bit late. So we got right on it when we got it and turned it around pretty quick. So I thank staff for doing that. Thank you. Thanks for getting it in, because certainly those bridges need attention. Are there any, are there any other questions or Mr. Wilcox, is your hand up?
It is. Thank you. Yeah, I toured the bridges this morning and, you know, the pictures and everything were great. And, and to Mr. Morgan's previous question, it's like, looking at the spalling on the sidewalks. I mean, this is like rehabbed ten years ago on the Factory Street and, and to see that much degradation in that amount of time for concrete seems kind of strange. And I was just wondering if that had been done then or if that was something that hadn't been addressed in the last batch. And I know this predates you, but it's just a, a question of my mind. And I know that we didn't get this last time we went through, so I'm glad that we're putting in for this again. So, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, would you call the roll, please, Mr. Halinga?
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Council moving on to the next item. Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero seven one. Whereas the Ypsie Arbor American Little League wishes to donate and install a digital scoreboard in Recreation Park. And whereas the city of Ypsilanti Parks and Recreation Master Plan identifies working with the Little League to continue to provide opportunities for youth baseball, including maintaining and improving the ball fields as a priority project for Recreation Park. And whereas the city attorney has prepared an agreement to allow the Ypsie Arbor American Little League to donate and install the digital scoreboard. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council, the city of Ypsilanti authorizes the city manager to sign the agreement with the Ypsie Arbor Little League to allow them to install the digital scoreboard.
Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
That's fun, awesome. Way to get, way to upgrade. Instead of writing sticks in the, in the sand, we want to get these guys into twenty twenty-one. I support this wholeheartedly for the young folks.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay, I would, oh, councilmember Somerville?
Oh, yeah, I just wanted, I think this is great. I'm going to support it. I did just want to verbalize that Eric, who spoke earlier during public comment, has his hand raised. I just wanted to let you know that this is, you're not going to be able to speak unless we can set that up. I just didn't want you to leave your hand up and not know what was going on. Sorry.
Oh, okay. I didn't see, I'm not seeing hands raised. Okay.
Oh, yeah, it's okay. I was looking at the attendees list.
Okay. I believe that we could let him speak, Mr. Halinga, please.
Council will have to suspend its rules.
We don't want to do that, do we?
Okay.
Spend our
I thought, okay, I thought maybe
There is, I believe Nicole Wimmert is here to discuss this project. Is that correct, Ron?
Yes, this, this Wimmert's a panelist on this call and she had previously indicated to me that she's available for questions if the council has any.
Okay. I just knew that we often have a presentation or people speaking for a resolution. So Ms. Wilmart, would you like to have a word to say?
Hi there. Good evening, everyone. Thank you. I just want to say thank you for your consideration for this. We're very excited to be able to improve the park a little bit and we hope that you will support it.
Okay, thank you. And I'd just like to thank the Ypsie Arbor American Little League for for even proposing and following through on the, this digital scoreboard. It certainly will be an asset to Recreation Park and an asset for, in, as the games go on. So thank you very much. Are there any other
Will this be a privately owned piece of equipment on public property?
I can answer that. Oh, Mr. Barr, do you want to go ahead? Okay. So the way, the way the agreement structured, the Little League will be donating the scoreboard to the city. Now, as part of the agreement, the Little League does have a provision where they have exclusive use over the billboard. So technically, it's going to be city property, but in use, the Little League's going to have private use of it.
The Little League's that's in this particular Ypsie Arbor group, the teams that are so it's hypothetically, there's team from Ypsilanti that are not a part of the Ypsie Arbor group and just wanted to use the board, they won't be able to.
That is correct.
There's a provision in the, in the agreement that says that they can give, grant them use of it, permission to do it, so.
Mr. Barr, I saw you come forth a couple of times. Did you want to add to this?
Well, this was a provision that we discussed, and the reason for the provision is that there's a certain amount of knowledge necessary to run the board. And so if you don't have that knowledge, you can ruin it. And so the idea was that the donors would be able to use it, but if someone else wanted to use it, they could agree to it, but they'd have to make sure that there was the knowledge to do that.
All right, thank you. Ms. Wilmart, I see your hand. Did you want to speak again?
Yeah, sorry, I was just going to say, the main reason for that provision was just because the, the scoreboard has an electronic wireless remote. And so that would need to be checked out because it's about a six hundred dollar expense. So we would just want to make sure that we know who's using that so that we can make sure it's put back.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Mr. Halinga, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Jones Chance? Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Council moving on to the next item. Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero seven-two, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti. Whereas the removal or removal of tree limbs and other debris from roadways and other public areas is an essential responsibility of the public, Department of Public Services. And whereas a grapple truck reduces employee injury and is necessary to remove these trees and other debris safely. And whereas the city council of the city of Ypsilanti has allocated the funds in the fiscal year twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one budget for this purchase. And whereas the purchase price of the vehicle is less than budgeted amount of two hundred and twenty-two thousand. Now, or be it resolved that the city council authorizes the purchase of the replacement grapple truck from Versa Lift Midwest for a purchase price of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and eight dollars, with any change orders to be approved by the city manager.
Is there a motion?
I'll move.
It's been moved and supported. Questions or discussion? All right, let's hear from Mr. Akers, please.
Thank you. So this proposal is for a scheduled vehicle replacement for a grapple truck, which was originally purchased in two thousand eight. Um, a grapple truck is essentially a large truck with a dump body and a hydraulic arm that can grab and lift various items. Um, for our fleet, the truck is most commonly used in our tree removal and trimming efforts and is an important vehicle because it allows us to respond to emergencies more quickly. Um, especially when a tree limb, uh, or light pole or a tree trunk is blocking a portion of the road. Um, and it also helps save our employees from lifting injuries while they're moving these large and heavy items. So originally, we quoted this vehicle as a new build vehicle, similar to how we have purchased vehicles in the past where we use it, use our purchasing coalitions to, uh, get bid pricing. Um, as we were reviewing these items, preparing it, our mechanics actually found an opportunity to purchase a demonstration vehicle from a lift manufacturer, um, with the same specifications that we were originally looking for and at a discounted rate. So the original budgeted amount for this vehicle was two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Um, and the new build price we received from the manufacturer was about a hundred ninety-four thousand. Um, the purchase price for the demonstration vehicle that was identified is a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars. So there's about a, a net savings of approximately thirty thousand dollars, thirty-six thousand dollars from the original new build price. Um, the truck that we're looking at is a twenty twenty-one model Packard brand. Um, it has two thousand three hundred miles on it. Um, and the warranty on the vehicle would begin when the unit is registered with the city. Um, additionally, the vehicle has not been used in debris removal or clean, cleanup. It's only been used for demonstration purposes. So, um, to give an example, you know, it hasn't been called out to job sites. It hasn't been called out to remove limbs or brush or move, you know, rocks or any heavy items. Um, it's really just been driven to various municipalities around the country that want to be able to operate it and see what its potential capacity could be. Um, so that, that's, that, that's the summary of the vehicle. One of the other things that I included in this line, I, in this, uh, RFL, was our vehicle replacement schedules. I, I, there was a comment at a prior meeting, um, regarding our vehicle replacement schedules and some of the truck purchases that we've made. Um, one of the things that I wanted to reassure council is, you know, as we're buying these trucks, we're trying to set up our vehicle purchase processes, um, so they're spread out. So for these larger vehicles, um, typically what you would see is, uh, these larger vehicles on seven or eight-year replacement schedules. Um, we try to keep them on ten because our mechanics do such a good job taking care of them that we usually get a couple more years of usage out of them before we really start to have some heavy maintenance. Um, and so some of our smaller vehicles or smaller fleet vehicles like cars, we, we tend to keep on an eight-year replacement schedule because that tends to be the life that we, the functional useful life of them that we get out of it. So I've included those in the packet. I'm happy to answer any questions about that, but, um, I know we've made a lot of truck purchases in the last year and a half, and, uh, I just wanted to reassure council that we are strategically planning and spreading out our purchases in the future. There is a plan moving forward. Um, so with that, it concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Akers? Yes, uh, Mr. Wilcoxon?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you, Ron, for the presentation. Sweet deal on the truck. That's pretty cool. In the, uh, the vehicle status, uh, table, I, I got confused by, uh, there's three things. I have one-ten, one-fifty, and four-seventy-two that state that they have acquisition dates of, of March of twenty twenty. And then the replacements in twenty thirty, and I, I wasn't sure if one of those was this truck. There's an aerial lift truck for tree trimming. Is that the same thing, or is that something else?
Uh, it, it's something else. So we have a, this truck is used to lift items when it's on the ground. The aerial lift truck is actually our boom truck, so that's where, um, the vehicle that we actually have an operator get in the boom and go up and cut limbs. Twenty thirty, boot in here.
Cool. And thank you for keeping the, the language in there about the propane. Um, I know that's not going to happen anytime soon, but it's, it's good to have that reminder on a regular basis.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Jones Chance?
Uh, yeah, it does sound like a very good deal. Um, I'm like Gideon's egg. What, um, what's the current, what's the current mileage on the, the grapple truck we have now?
I don't have that information in front of me. I, I.
Hundreds of thousands, or I, I would imagine not.
I, I don't think it's in the hundreds of thousands. I, it typically, um, are non-environmental vehicles are usually somewhere in the forty to fifty to sixty range. I, I can find out the answer and respond, um, tomorrow.
Well, I guess a better question might be, what is the, what's the main factor in, you know, sort of the depreciation over time? You know, what's, what causes it to expire in twelve years?
A lot of it is age and, and regular use. So, I mean, you, you have all of the, the, you know, factors that you normally have in a car that ties in, plus you have rust. Um, you know, with these, uh, these, especially these trucks with the grappling capability, abilities and boom, you have all these hydraulic mechanics that, um, tend to have issues and failures that go on. Um, there's a, there's a, um, exhaust capture system that after a certain amount of time, the, the, it's, it's intended to prevent diesel emissions from going out in the air. But you have to do regular cleaning of them, um, every couple of years, and those tend to get more expensive. And you tend to have failures with that system as it goes, as it ages. Um, you know, you have air brakes, you have air brake issues that tie in. I mean, there, there's surprisingly complicated pieces of machinery.
So buying one with more mileage doesn't really make any difference. It's the most, the most important thing is that the, uh, hydraulic equipment hasn't been used.
Yes.
Cool. Thanks. Sounds like a good deal.
Yes, it does. Mr. Morgan?
I got, um, just a couple, was a question or two. It's pretty simple. It's all straightforward. The initial budgeted amount was two hundred and twenty-two thousand. Was that initial budgeted amount based on all the things you needed on the truck and the components and the functions of the truck?
They were estimates that were provided by our mechanic two or three years ago. Um, you know, they base them on, on market rates and a couple other factors. The, they were, they were estimated essentially.
We got all the things that we wanted on that truck for a hundred and fifty-eight thousand.
Yes.
Now, there's something in here about a twenty-five thousand dollar addition for diesel. Is that also on the truck? Or is, if, if I'm not mistaken, is that already added on?
And, uh. Also, so, so the vehicle, the truck is a diesel vehicle. Um, we had talked about in the summary about propane conversion systems that we could install to save, um, it'd be, just because it's, it's, it, you know, reduces greenhouse gas emissions. There are aftermarket conversion systems that you can put on these vehicles. Well, well, they're all aftermarket conversion systems. So, so you can install them after you receive the build of the vehicle. It's just we've looked at in our operations, um, it's not really useful to put them on if we don't have a close ability to, uh, fuel, to the propane fuel. Um, just because the closest filling stations are, are, you know, a half hour, you know, twenty-five, thirty-minute drive away. And taking our staff's time out to go refuel a vehicle doesn't make sense from an operational perspective. Um, so we can do that at a later date if we ever install a propane filling station in our yard. Um, those are things that we can kind of plan for and adapt and install on most of our vehicles after, uh, after, uh, after we purchase them.
Is, is, just, just, is isolated question, is there an average amount of what it would take, cost to put a propane filling station on site?
Yeah, so we, we estimated, there's a couple different ways you can do it, but, but we estimated to purchase the tank and to do the concrete and electrical installations, that'd be somewhere in the, the sixty thousand dollar range. Um, there are other options. You can lease the tanks, but you still have to do some of the site improvements.
So if, if, so if we spent two hundred and twenty-two, well, if we budgeted two hundred and twenty-two thousand, then we spent a hundred and fifty thousand. This is, this could be some wiggle room in there to create in the future, I guess, from the surplus, um, for what we saved, I guess. I, I just thought, again, time and money, times drive, ability, times, it'd add up really fast, so I can, I can imagine it not being feasible now. I just wanted to know if that's the flat rate of what we're going to pay without any additions to the truck.
So the one, the one fifty-eight number six oh, I think it's one fifty-eight, six oh eight is, is the flat number that we would be paying for the truck.
Thank you so much, Ron, for your. I have no more questions, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, uh, Mr. Jones Chance?
Yeah, it's, so it seems as though what we're saving is almost exactly what we would need to install a propane filling station. So I guess, what, what will happen to the surplus? I guess, no, maybe we'll decide that in a, in a week or so. Um, but it might be good to keep that in mind unless, uh, Mr. Akers, you had something else in mind.
As of right now, um, we've, we've had a couple items that, uh, we heard, we had one item that were, that is scheduled for replacement, that's going to likely come in a little bit over than what we anticipated. But there's nothing that, you know, would, would eat up fifty thousand dollars of savings. So, um, I guess ultimately it's going to be up to, to council on how they would like to proceed.
And then I, I assume that the existing truck is going to be resold through a broker or something like that?
Yes, so we've used a couple auction services. Um, we're actually going to be doing it at some point in the summer because we have a handful of trucks that, um, you know, we've, we've purchased and we're waiting for the replacements to come in, and we're going to do a, a block of vehicles at some point in the summer. Um, we're just looking at auction agencies and, and rates right now.
Do you have a rough idea of what you might net from the sale of the current truck?
Um, that's a good question. I, with, especially with COVID right now, I'm not really sure what the markets are looking like, but I, I'd imagine, you know, forty thousand, fifty thousand, somewhere in the realm there. I had to guess.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Langa, would you please call the role?
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Akers, for, uh, spending time with us, and thank you for that big savings. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Yes. Okay, um, next, Mr. Holenga?
Council, the next resolution on the agenda is twenty twenty-one dash zero seven-three. Resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas two oh-six, two-ten North Washington Street was foreclosed on by the Washna County Treasurer for non-payment of property taxes. And as the city of Ypsilanti purchased the property using its right of first refusal from the county treasurer in twenty nineteen. And whereas the city accepted a proposal from Avalon Housing in September twenty twenty to create affordable housing in the city of Ypsilanti. Therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council approves entering into an agreement of purchase and sale with Avalon Housing for two oh-six, two-ten North Washington, pending legal council's final review.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
I'll move. Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported. I see, Mr. Myers, you have some words of wisdom for us?
Yeah, thank you, council. Um, this is a very long process, uh, to get where we're at, and we still have a long way to go, but I'm really excited. Um, Avalon Housing has been fantastic to work with, um, and we've really hammered out some of the few minor details. But there's a couple of things that Mr. Bard has wants to review prior to, um, officially signing it, but this takes us into the next level. So, once we find this agreement, then we'll be able to have the nine-month due diligence period that Avalon has requested. Um, and then, once that ends, if they want to proceed, uh, then it'll take us into the, their twelve-month financing, uh, period. And so we're still a couple of years away, but this at least gets us to where we need to be to get this development started. And so, um, that's kind of it. I know we've talked about this property a lot, uh, over the years, um, but I'm really excited to see where we're at.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Myers' comments? Mr. Jones Chance?
Yeah, I've got a question about the financing period. Is there, and maybe Avalon can speak to this. Is there any way that part of that or some of that can be combined into the, uh, due diligence period? Or is there a reason that, um, we separate the two? Or is it already included?
It is, it is separate. Uh, the due, the due diligence period will begin to make sure that everything can work, and they will be applying for their tax credits. But once they get approved for the tax credits, they may have to get a lender, and that all takes usually a year. Um, and so I think Avalon is raising their hand. Um, I don't know if I can let.
I can't see. Mr. Langa, could you let, allow them to speak, the one from Avalon?
I, I can do it actually as well.
Okay.
Michael, you're allowed to speak.
Hello, um, first of all, thank you very much, council, for, uh, reviewing our proposal and giving us the opportunity to work with you, and, and hopefully this purchase agreement will, will set us down that path a little further. So the, the, the relationship between those two periods, I, I think is what you're asking about. Um, and, and why one starts at the conclusion of the other, for the most part, to be competitive in our funding applications, we typically need to have, uh, all of our entitlements in place. And so the end of that first period gives us time not just to assess the property, which is, I think all of you know, suffered a fire, and so we really need to be very careful about the physical ability to build anything there. But then we need to have zoning and site plan and all of that in place in order to be competitive. And that's, that's why we typically sequence, uh, working out the details of the project itself, putting in place all the municipal approvals, and then a separate cycle for the financing.
And so, uh, a, a realistic anticipation is a year for the financing?
Yeah, um, our financing model, in order to make it affordable, relies heavily on public financing. Uh, the, the low-income housing tax credit is the most significant. There's two rounds in a year. Um, and you apply, um, if you're approved in the first round, you'll find out three, four months later, and it will take the better part of that year to pull together all of the legal, uh, documents and then relationships. Uh, there's a good chance we'll be going for more than just tax credits. There's county, uh, there's federal funding that the county controls for the urban county. That's one. Uh, there's federal funding that the county controls for the urban county, that's once a year. Uh, and so lining up all of these financings, it's it's unfortunately, it's not going to a bank and having them look at it for ninety days and then signing the documents, they have very specific application windows. And um, a year is uh what we believe is a realistic uh estimate.
Okay. Um, and then uh. Um, I had a couple of other questions, um. At some of the time periods, I just, a little long to me, you know, um. In uh section five, the evidence of title section, we're granting a full thirty days um to inspect the title commitment. I mean, I I imagine it's gonna be pretty straightforward.
It it should be.
Can we, can we truncate this a little bit, just so that we get some housing built?
Uh, I I understand the urgency and um the 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 length, the cycles that we work on are no doubt uh long and and it it takes a while. What I would say about the title thing is, remember that is within the um due diligence period, so it's not affecting that original nine-month cycle, it's simply within it. So um, uh, you know, I I think we could uh talk with our counsel about uh his advice on on shortening the title period, but but whether we sign off on title in thirty days or sixty days or fifteen days, it's, that's not, that's not likely to be one of the um gatekeeping timelines. I've been, our real challenge here, honestly, is our architect and the engineers looking at the fire damage and assessing uh what kind of rehab costs are gonna, it's gonna take. Um, but we can certainly explore that.
Yeah, my main concern is, you know, if things do get uh you know, if things are picked up, that we go back and forth and back and forth thirty days at a time, and you know, it starts to, it starts to add up.
Un- understood. I mean, I will say in Washtenaw County, we've not had real challenging title issues, but that's in the past, and obviously every property has its own history.
Also, a- as far as the timeline goes, this is within what they had put in the proposal as well. So then, this actually is a little bit shorter than what they had asked for, which was twenty-four months, and so um, so th- they have tried to shorten it as much as they can.
Sure. Um. Just securing the buildings, fine, I said some questions about that. And then I guess the closing eight months after uh after the light tech credits are uh, it just seems long to me, but maybe, maybe it isn't.
Um, I can give you my honest answer, which is, I wish it was long, it is pretty usual for how long it takes to assemble the kinds of legal documents that come with tax credit financing, which is the the most important and significant federal support for low-income housing right now and fairly cumbersome as a sort of legal mechanism.
Okay, and then my last question is, in section seventeen, um, I know you've got to do an assignment to the Housing Association. Um, but is, is there a way in this miscellaneous section? Uh, you know, about heirs, representatives, and successors, that we could maybe have a separate attachment with a list of any potential entities that that might be?
Um, we should look into where we talk about assigning, and if we I, so let me, let me talk about eighteen in response to your question about seventeen, in the hope that it, it's got language in there that accomplishes your goal, um, which is that phrase affiliated is essentially limiting um who we could assign this to one of these entities, which is a necessary entity for the financing, as you were acknowledging, um, to one that is a controlled by Avalon Housing. Um, so we can't go and sell this to a third-party developer at the tail end of everything, that's, I mean, it's certainly not our intent. Uh, but I also believe that the point of number eighteen is to give us the flexibility of creating a single-purpose entity for financing purposes, but it has to stay affiliated, controlled by Avalon. And typically, the way we do this is we spin off a subsidiary of Avalon that then becomes the general partner uh in, in in a partnership. I don't know if that's sufficient, or if you want, you know, counsel to look at ways to make it more explicit. I I presume you're you're trying to make sure that, that we're not able to then give it away to an entity that's very different in characteristics than counsel is looking for.
Or or at least that we know who the potential, yeah, I mean, I assume a name is easy to come up with and sort of pick out in advance. Um, you know, if I were writing a sales agreement like this, I would always have that in in an attachment.
Would you like to add that?
Yeah, I think, I think that'd be good to look into.
Like, this is.
If it's not too much of a problem, but those are all my questions. Overall, it looks, looks fine.
When I think about who reviewed this, um. It's, it could be added, or, and also with Mr. uh, um, oh, with Michael, uh, if that uh is is agreeable to the.
So this is a proposal, right? Meaning that we have the right to accept it as is or make modifications, correct?
Yeah.
This is, this is a little different, this is an actual purchase agreement.
A purchase agreement, okay. Can can I ask a question, Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Appel, uh, do you, does Avalon Housing own any properties in the city of Ypsilanti currently?
We do not. We currently own, oh, go ahead, more questions. I was going to say, where we do own properties, but.
So you own property in Ann Arbor?
We own the bulk of our properties is in Ann Arbor, which is where we got started in nineteen ninety-two. Um, we now own and operate a a property in Chelsea. Uh, and we are in the process of constructing a property in Dexter that we will own and operate.
Have you, have you guys um as an entity taken up projects as um lofty as this one, as far as a burnt and rehab like that?
The the extent of rehab and that will be necessary on this one uh is more extensive than other properties. We've done new construction on Greenfield, and we've done um rehab. But this is certainly different and and in speaking to that, and uh, I would point to the team we've brought together, Mark Heiser with Phoenix Contractors, who uh uh, you know, are centered here in Ypsie, uh, and David um with uh Cornerstone Design, David Esaw, is our architect, and and we are confident that that's a team that that can help us understand the admitted complications of a rehab like this.
Um, this is for my own personal um need, I wanna ask, I want a question, and I'm gonna give you time to answer. One, I wanna work in definition of affordable housing from Avalon Housing, and do you equate low-income housing with affordable housing?
Wow. So I I will start to answer it, um, uh, I will say, uh, Wendy Cardy Saxon, who introduced herself at the beginning, is our Director of Real Estate Development, and i- if she is raising her hand, um, please uh let let her speak for Avalon uh as well, but um, so by affordable housing, um, there's a number of ways that that we focus on it. So our emphasis has always been on the lowest-income residents in the community, meaning persons um, whose incomes are thirty percent AMI or less, um, which, depending on household size, I'm gonna really ballpark it here, is fifteen to twenty-five thousand the year. Um, and where we are able to get vouchers uh for a project like this, we will have built-in section-eight vouchers, so that will guarantee that regardless of a household's income, they pay thirty percent of their income towards rent. Um, so that's the deepest kind of affordability. Um, because of the financing, the high end of affordability here that that we could be offering um, would typically be at sixty percent of area immediate income, which is probably closer to the forty to sixty thousand dollar range, maybe it's a little higher depending on family size. But I think what I should point out is, we've not made final determinations on any of this. Joe Myers explained to us both the goals that were in your RFP, but also the community benefits process that we look forward to being part of uh and working with both Joe, staff, and counsel to determine the range of affordability that the city believes is appropriate for that site, combined with our ability to finance housing that can create that kind of affordability. So, I I don't, I hope that was a specific enough answer for you. I don't know if Wendy wants to add more, I certainly wanna give her that opportunity.
Did that answer your question, Mr. Morgan, or would you like to hear from Wendy?
I'm gonna process it, I heard words he used, I'm gonna process it and uh and and put it into my brain. So I appreciate the uh, the last question I have is, after all the renovations and upgrades to the, to the building, uh, how much would you imagine the building would be worth?
Oh, my. Uh.
Cause I'm imagining a hundred thousand dollars is pretty cheap after having property in Ann Arbor and Chelsea, um, even with the rent that need to take place.
So let let me not try to answer a question I'm not fully prepared to answer, which is, I don't know the ins and outs of property values in that area near downtown Ypsie, it's certainly a very desirable location. Um, and as you've also pointed out, property values here are, they start at a lower base than in uh most of the communities we've worked at. Um, I w- one of the features of affordable housing is although our investment needs to make sense because we're putting in money in order to keep this property operating for fifteen years to forty years, depending on the financing, we're not quite as limited to a pure eighty percent of value, you can't put in more than that. We are usually quote-unquote over-investing in a property from the point of view of a market analysis. Uh, because we have to, we have to end up with a product that will reliably provide quality, affordable housing that are not just our tenants wanna live at, but our investors, because that's how a tax credit works. Our investors are secure with for fifteen to forty years, so um, uh, sorry, I babbled a little bit. Um, I I don't know exactly what the value would be, we can look into that.
That's cool, with your investments and things, I'm sure it'd it'd wash out once all of the taxes and different things and and different mishda and different grants and stuff, so um, I just appreciate you um coming and answering some questions for us, thank you so much. And thank you for Wendy, is that her name? Sorry. Um, from Avalon, I have no further questions, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. J- oh, Mr. Will Coxon.
Um, yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I did have a question about section fourteen in terms of the payment in lieu of taxes, I'm I'm not I understand the general concept of how that works for federally-owned properties, but I'm not sure how that applies in this particular case. If if you purchase it with federal money, does that mean that the federal government owns it, or that that you own it, and there's something else about uh pilot programs that I don't know about?
I don't know if Joe wants to answer about pilot, or I should.
I I I'll give you the kind of the 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 basic understanding, which is, the city would have to approve a pilot. Uh, that was part of the our, the um, RFP that we sent out, uh, that we'd be willing to offer that for affordable housing, and essentially it said uh, the payment of taxes, quote-unquote, as a percentage of shelter rates. So basically, whatever the rent is, you know, w- we have an ordinance that that does that. And so, um, the the property would be owned by Avalon Housing. Um, and it would, they would be requesting a pilot, and that's where the community benefits ordinance would 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 be triggered. Um, I will say, as far as the value of this property, without the tax incentives, and really the the financing vehicle um, that Avalon has put together, or another uh nonprofit and affordable housing provider, um, this property probably wouldn't be able to be built uh or or rebuilt based on the condition uh inside. Um, maybe now, uh, with property values going up uh more, we might be able to do something for pure market rate, but really, the the goal of this, the purchase of this property was with affordable housing uh funds um, to be used for affordable housing, and so that's kind of where we're at. I, Mike, I don't know if you wanna talk about the federal tax credits that you guys are seeking, which is different than the pilot.
Um, uh, if, uh, did that answer the question that the council member asked about pilot, cause I can, or is there?
It it didn't really, because my understanding of pilot is that that's uh uh an agreement with the federal government that they pay taxes, or they pay, they make payments in lieu of uh getting taxes because they own the property, so I'm not sure how that works in the situation where you own the property.
I can speak to the Michigan, uh, how pilots work in Michigan specifically for affordable housing, which is, um, one of the reasons that we have to create that different structure that uh, I think Councilmember Morgan was asking about. Um, is in order to be eligible for a payment in lieu of taxes, uh, an an affordable housing development needs to be owned by a certain kind of organization. Then this is state law that guides that. Once you create the proper ownership structure, which we would, an affiliate, a subsidiary, so to speak, of Avalon, we can then enter into a relationship with a local municipality to make a payment in lieu of taxes. So instead of the city of Ypsilanti collecting property taxes on that property based on, you know, uh, state equalized value times your mileage rate, um, it's going to be based on um a formula, which is a percentage of the rents we collect uh minus some of our core um expenses, and that formula is is, the range of that formula is is established in state law, and we would be working with your staff and coming back to council to seek your approval for the specific percentage you would charge us. But it would, but but I should, I should say to to be clear, i- it is a way of reducing the tax burden on that property so that we can lower rents.
Got it.
So, Councilmember Coxon, I I apologize, um, there are like five different payment in lieu of taxes models. And so you're, yeah, so I I thought you were talking about how the cities work, but it it's far different from what the federal government does.
All right, thank you, yeah, between the two of them, I've got the picture, so, thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Jones Chance, did you get your uh question asked? Because I know some hands got raised and um, are you satisfied? I know you were asking, and it was suggested that possibly there could be a change, and Joe, I didn't fully understand whether um, you talked about this being a different kind of a of uh documents, so, Mr. Brook, uh, Jones Chance, did you get your question answered?
No, I actually would like to know um if the rest of council would be uh, and maybe it's a minor thing, would be interested in having an attachment, an addendum to the agreement that states explicitly which entities might be um assigned, I just I would never leave it open-ended like that if I were representing a client, and uh I don't think I do it here.
If you make a motion, you know.
Okay, would you like to explain a little bit more about what you would want it to be?
Uh, sure, I move that we amend the contract to include and exhibit detailing uh which heirs, representative, successors, and uh interest in the signees, the purchaser might use.
Support.
Okay, could you explain that?
Well, and uh, so in section seventeen, it kind of leaves open-ended who potential assignees of this contract can be for the purchasing. Um, I understand that they they have to um assign uh the agreement to a a limited dividend housing association. I imagine they already, you know, have that entity set up, or or they could come up with a name before. A limited dividend housing association. I imagine they already, you know, have that entity set up or or they could come up with a name before it is set up. Um but. You know, it's it's in two separate sections, and I would feel more comfortable. Knowing what the potential entities were, in case any of them actually do exist and and uh, you know, we can look them up.
All right, Mr. Barr, is this something that can be done? Joe, I saw your hand.
Uh I was just gonna ask Mr. Barr.
This is something that can be done. Uh the issue is, will this fly with the respective purchaser?
The last part, you got a little bit garbled, Mr. Barr. Could you say that over again, please?
Yes, we're dealing with Avalon who is purchasing the property. It's quite common to this type of situation, as uh Mr. Apple talked about. To have a, for my partnership, a general partner later on in the agreement, or later on in the process. I'm happy to have this put in if it won't kill the deal.
Okay, thank you. Uh Ms. Simmons.
Uh I was just gonna say, I the question to me isn't necessarily can, it's should. Um I'm not sure that this seems necessary um to add in, but I don't know, just some thoughts. So to me, the bigger question is. Does it make sense from, I guess, a legal standpoint? I was curious what Mr. Barr might think about that.
Okay. Mr. Barr.
Um, yes, in any. Real estate transaction, especially something like this. Uh there has to be at some point, uh uh. Uh trust in the parties. Uh the buyer has to trust us to be able to perform and give them the property. And the buyer, we have to trust that the buyer will follow through in good faith on the items in the documents. Uh what Councilmember Brian Jones Chance is suggesting is not unreasonable. It's not unheard of. It it can be done, but the question is. Um is this gonna be a deal killer? And so that I think I have to ask. Michael Apple for his input in it. I'm I'm happy to put it in if they're agreeable to it. If they're not, then that's something that council has to come to grips with.
I I'm not sure if I'm still. Being able to be heard. Am I?
You are.
Oh, okay.
Yes, we hear you.
It it's not a problem for us. I mean, as as the council member suggested, it's a matter of us in a slightly different sequence. Uh going up to the state, uh not literally, uh you know, forming forming this uh. Limited Dividend Housing Association earlier in the process so that we have a specific name. If we can avoid creating it tonight. And you can allow your attorney perhaps to to settle on the final one, that that would probably be preferable to us. Uh but I don't see any problem with us uh having created the entity uh as part of the purchase offer.
And I. Um m- m- Mr. Mr. Jones Chance would would, I guess, just to kind of uh. Let's speed this up a tiny bit. Would it would it be better for it to say um in section eighteen? Purchaser may assign this agreement to an organization affiliated with Avalon Housing. Uh and affiliated limited divi- dividend housing association, so we don't have to create the actual name and and structure tonight?
Well.
Hold on, Mr. Hold on, Mr. Morgan. Uh miss, let Mr. Jones Chance answer.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't quite catch that. Could you?
What 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 if, hey, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, um so would it, would it make your, uh would it help you if? Section eighteen says the purchaser may assign uh this agreement to a. An organization affiliated with Avalon Housing and affiliated limited dividend housing association as defined by such and such. So it says they can assign it to somebody affiliated to Avalon Housing and that and that's it.
Uh do you mean striking the the end section in in the end part of section seventeen?
Oh, oh, uh, striking the, I thought we were just talking about eighteen.
Um well, see eighteen makes it specific who the affiliated. You know, that that that's that's pursuant to the the act, but section seventeen.
So yeah.
Technically, they can assign it, technically, they could assign it to anyone the way it's written now. And you know, in almost any, you know, commercial transaction, you know, the contract has to be assigned at some point. Um typically, you would want to know who those potential assignees would be.
So putting in chapter and seventeen saying that that assignee would be affiliated with Avalon Housing would would satisfy your your need?
Yeah, pursuant to the same act. I think that's fine, yeah.
And that would, that would make your life a little bit easier, Mr. Apple.
Yeah, that that works as well.
That would work for me.
It will work for you, Mr. Barr?
Uh yes, it will.
All right, Mr. Morgan.
I was wondering if this is a standard practice, are they usually left open ended like that and and named at later dates? So the question, if that's if that's a normal practice. And you and we don't have to be cumbersome tonight, but. I mean, what what Mr. Jones Chance is saying is is protecting our city, and he's not out of line for asking what he's asking for. And so what 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 I'm trying to hear is, is there okay to make a specific date where a specific name is on the the document? Um because all this time is being extended. There's time to name someone, a subsidiary, affiliate, affiliate is still broad and open. Okay, it's it's not defined by any standard, uh by any standards. So uh I is is this an aversion? Is it something that normally happens that you can go through a whole purchase agreement without putting the name on there? Or is this free, is this too early to put a name on there? Uh on on what what Mr. Jones Chance is talking about, Mr. Apple?
I- in our past experience, we have typically not named the entity early in the process and done it at the end. But we've also. Are typically purchasing it from a private. Individual, and I understand your comment about a municipal civic, you know, you have a purpose behind the sale also. Um but I think in our purchases from um. Where the where the city of Ann Arbor has been involved and where um we bought land from the city of Dexter. We use that language of an affiliate of Avalon Housing, um because that tied it in close enough. That the municipality understood that you were Avalon Housing would own it. We just needed to own it through. This structure that was tied into the financing. Uh but but we can work with this either way. As I said, uh we'd rather not name it tonight. But um we could name it as as part of the process if if that, if council preferred that.
I think having a specific time to name it would be really cool. At some point in the next few months, uh ninety days, a half a year or something. Um just because a nine month inspection period. So sometime before that ends, I I I don't. I can't make that decision alone. I don't say I know enough to make it, but I think before the 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 extension, before the 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 inspection period is over, I think. Uh is be comfortable to know our cities, um. The plans that you have, and I I appreciate you even wanting, you're in your company, and Avalon Housing wants to find property here and refurbish it. For low income, more affordable housing. It's a it's a blessing that you guys are looking at our um, at our at our at our city as a place for this um. But again, we want to protect our city too in every way. Thank you.
Yes, I have a question. Just having gone through recently with the. Um situation that we had at Cross Street Village. Um and the big change where it was to be affordable housing focused particularly. For seniors and then uh abruptly, it became uh market rate. And most of the seniors there had to move. Uh and I guess maybe this question is to Mr. Barr. Mr. Barr, is there anything in this agreement that protects us? From that happening again? That and if and admit that goes along with the possibly the naming of the affiliate or whatever. Do we have an, is there, does the agreement that it remains affordable carry over to the affiliate?
Right, I'm gonna ask Mr. Apple to chime in on this, but the short answer to your question is, it depends on the financing. The with Cross Street Village, what happened there was because of the law and the financing. So I'd ask Mr. Apple to give us his idea, please.
Council, before doing that, there is a motion on the table. We need to move, vote on that amendment. And also, um Mr. Jones Chance agreed to the motion stated by Joe Myers. Um but uh Councilmember Morgan has not agreed to that that change.
Okay, and Andrew, I thought this was all part of the discussion for them of that motion. So if it's not, if we've gotten off from them, from the motion, then we do need to deal with it. But I was seeing this as part of the discussion of that motion.
If uh Mr. Jones Chance agreed to the uh the amendment uh of the motion, I I I I still second it.
Okay.
Okay.
Could we have the motion restated, please?
Um absolutely, and I I. Add to, add to section seventeen. The purchaser may assign to an entity affiliated with Avalon Housing. Uh an affiliated limited division housing association.
Thank you.
As defined in, as defined in Act three forty-six of Public Acts nineteen sixty-six as amended.
That should be section eighteen.
Well, that we're adding that to section seventeen, just so that there's no ambiguity about who's the potential purchaser might be. I'm sorry this is taking a long time. I just want to know who the potential parties to a transaction are before I sign off on it.
Can I just?
I didn't know it was gonna, I didn't know it was gonna be this long.
If I can say one thing, I'm sorry, I know I'm not, uh it's limited dividend housing association. I think I heard limited division. I wouldn't want the wrong legal language to get caught up in the resolution.
Thank you.
Okay, just just a reminder that the the motion is pending legal counsel's official sign off. Some small tweaks can be made um per the original motion.
Okay, and I think, Mr. Barr, you were going to. Give us some clarity on. Oh gosh, the um you were speaking to the fact. The what happened at Cross Street and how this relates or doesn't relate.
Uh that that was a question, and I started to answer that. I think Clerk Kalenga has suggested that we should address the motion on the table first.
Okay, and I I was seeing, I was seeing this as part of the answer to that motion, that knowing um. The affiliate that is going to be named, would they be able to do? Um something similar to what happened at Cross Street? And I I need that before in knowing how to vote on Mr. Jones's uh motion.
Sure. All right, the the short answer to your question is no. The uh ability to change the affordable housing aspect of is tied in with the with the financing. And this is a particularly um. Not, it's not uh completely visible, I think. And so I think Mr. Apple can perhaps bring us some more wisdom on this.
Shall I uh respond, Mayor?
Yes, please do.
Okay, um. Uh the the quickest answer is actually one of the advantages, I believe, a nonprofit developer offers you as a partner. Is o- our goal, our reason uh to exist is long term permanent ownership of these properties. We're not looking to live out a compliance period and then realize the market value that was uh. Built up in the property, which is what happened at Cross Street. Um and there's a number of ways that that happens. One is. As a nonprofit, we are of course restricted from certain kinds of activities. Um and 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 while I won't say a nonprofit is prohibited from selling a property, because that that would not be accurate. Um we're limited in what we can do with the revenue when we sell a property, so we don't have the same incentives. That a private developer has uh to go to go market. But very explicitly, that is not Avalon's purpose, that is not our goal, and that's not our track record. Uh we have uh. Developed a number of tax credit properties in Ann Arbor uh that reached the end of their fifteen year compliance period. And what we did is we went back to the state and resyndicated for another fifteen years. Uh because that's, that's what we do. That's our job. That's our mission.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other questions or discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, uh Mr. Lingo, would you call the role on the motion, please?
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion on the resolution? Mr. Apple, do you have anything else you'd like to share with us or or Mr. Ma?
Uh all I would say is thank you for the trust you're showing in us.
Can I ask one last question, Mayor? I just want to ask, I want to ask Mr. Apple, just in in your history with Avalon Housing, no affiliate, um. There's any affiliate, has there been an affiliate that has been named that has been a private entity?
Um, I'd have to ask you exactly what you mean by private entity. We are, we were a nonprofit, which is technically private. It's not public in that sense. But if, but if what you're asking is. Um have we created any entities that are outside the nonprofit world or outside the control? Of our housing subsidies, the answer would be no.
Thank you.
I thank you. Any other discussion? Questions, Mr. Jones Chance, is that your hand up?
Yeah, this might be a procedural thing, but when will the final contract come back for approval, or are we approving it with this change now?
This is, this is approving the contract with that change subject to my final review.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Myers, you have any comments before we go, before we vote? No? All right, seeing none from council. Uh Mr. Hilinga, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Absolutely, yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Apple and Wendy, and I believe uh Miss Winmar, Win Winmer. Nicole, I remember Nicole. Not sure how to pronounce the last name, but thank you all for coming. Thank you. You're welcome.
Council, the next item or the next section of the agenda is board and commission nominations. There are three uh reappointments, the LDFA. Uh Karen Charter Sustainability Commission, Brian Foley and Keith McCloskey. And then a new um, a new member of the Human Relations Commission, Richard Smith. Um the next section is liaison reports, starting with SEMCO.
Uh no report.
Wasana Area Transportation Study?
Um no report.
Urban County?
We have a meeting coming up.
DDA?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor Lewis. We've got a meeting next week, a really busy month for us. We are going to be looking at, the Independent Film Festival of Ypsilanti has an event sponsorship. We're looking to update our landscaping contract, our waste management contract. The North Huron Billboard and some artwork we're looking to have made. And then Depot Town Plaza, we're putting up some lights. And last but not least, some signage improvements for the street closure. So about eight pretty big important items. Looking forward to making some headway on them.
Thank you. And Mr. Jacobs, how did the closing of Washington go?
I saw folks eating at Beezy's just earlier this morning, and so the first patrons are visiting the North Washington Street closure. The FCL House is getting all set up. Bobcat Bonnies is looking really great. We're just trying to make sure that the tents involved in the street closure are safe and working through that last little bit of regulation before we're going to see things really take shape and come alive down on North Washington.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. Yes.
Okay.
Next item on the liaison reports is Friends of Rutherford Pool.
Nothing at this time. Can I ask a question at this point? You know, we have these liaison reports and, and we've all taken liaison positions with different commissions, and can we add that in this section for the next meeting?
My, my feeling of this is these liaison reports are for outside bodies and during council proposed business, that's when those items would be made. But I can add them if, if that's the will of council.
What exactly are you wanting to add, Mr. Wilcoxen? I missed it.
So liaison reports from, so I'm liaison to the Sustainability Commission. And, you know, Councilmember Morgan and I were discussing, you know, how we, how we address issues from within the commissions in terms of, you know, recruiting people and things like that, and, and having a regular way of, of having this in the agenda as a regular item rather than just having it as council proposed business every time. So what, you know, I, I brought this up here just because of that conversation, but I guess what I'd like to do is add that as a discussion item for the next agenda. And we'll submit that as needed, so.
Support that.
So you're wanting to have a liaison report, but adds the, the, the commissions that are in here also commission reports? Is that what you're?
Right, and so I'll, I'll have a conversation with, with City Clerk Kalenga and, and see how we could work that in otherwise. And then, you know, we can discuss that at the next meeting or, you know, come up with a proposal for that, so.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I was understanding what you were wanting.
It's just that, you know, with the, with the commissions, we want to make sure that we're, we're paying consistent attention to, to people being nominated and getting these membership and things like that, so. That was all.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, council proposed business, let's see. Where are people posted on here? All right, let's start down here with Mayor Proton Brown. Now work up.
Hi, thank you, and I apologize to you all. Thank you for being with me this evening. Um, my only question that I am wanting to respond to a constituent about in particular is around the speed bumps and when those would be being placed out on streets that had them last year. I've had a few inquiries regarding when those would be coming back out.
Okay, Mr. Akers, can you give, help us with that one?
Yes, so our current plan is to reinstall the speed bumps around mid-May. We're going through and we're doing sweeping of all the city streets right now. And by mid-May, we should have everything addressed and be able to install speed bumps, the other traffic control measures.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Not that I can think of on this evening, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. Councilmember Simmons?
Actually, I don't think I have anything. I guess maybe a question for Mr. Akers. On Cornell, I think close to Huron, there's supposed to be a pretty bad pothole or something. I think it's right by the intersection possibly. And I heard kind of through the, you know, Facebook Great Vine in the neighborhood that there had been some repair work done, but it doesn't look to be permanent. Would that have been, would that have been something we did? Do you know, or?
So there's two utility, so there's one on Cornell closer towards the school. That was a DT utility patch, which we asked them to go out and fill the, the patch in with more cold patch. That one was brought up level. I know that was one that was going to complain about. The other one on the corner of Cornell and Huron River Drive, there is a mantle structure there that's owned by AT&amp;T. So we went in and kind of smoothed, patched, we put cold patch in, smoothed it around so the impact wouldn't be as great when you drove over it. But we're still trying to get in contact with somebody from AT&amp;T to do a permanent repair.
Okay, so the, and that's, that's the one I was wondering about. So, so AT&amp;T really needs to address that? Okay, all right, thank you so much for clarifying that.
Thank you. Anything else? Anything else, Ms. Simmons? No? Okay, Mr. Jones Chance?
Uh, yeah, just a couple of things I might, I'll reach out to, uh, one or two other council members to work on violence reduction or elimination preferably.
Yes.
Just so that there's, I don't know, maybe a few of us who have interest that are sort of always working on it. And I'd like to do the same thing with affordable housing, just so that we don't lose momentum. So feel free to reach out if you're, if you're interested in an ongoing project. I also just, I've been made aware of, you know, a lot of constituents getting sick with COVID and dying, and with vaccine availability, where it is right now and improving, it's just becoming more and more unnecessary. I've recognized the challenges early on. I was only able to get my first dose on Saturday, and yeah, I feel like I was pulling strings. I mean, I, it, it's, it's crazy. But the number of people who still don't want it is really scary. You know, you can't get as much information talking to your friends or scrolling through Facebook or doing a Google search as somebody who's a virologist gets working for years in a lab. You just can't. It's not the same information. So just take the damn vaccine and stay alive. Like this is getting crazy. I also wanted to follow up with Mr. Akers, I guess. Well, actually, I just wanted to say that, you know, that, I just wanted to thank you for jumping on the garbage truck rut issue in the rec park the other day. And I'm, I'm curious, I didn't get to follow up with you, but I'm sort of curious where we stand on that, and then maybe if you could explain why it's necessary to drive on the, on the park. I, I assume it's to collect the barrels, the trash barrels. I wasn't really sure.
Um, so in, in the parks, I guess the follow-up is what happened is we talked with our staff. Our, our staff will not be driving across the, the field in the park anymore. You know, that, that area gets soft when it gets wet, and the trash trucks tend to be a little heavier and, and they get stuck, and this isn't the first time it's happened. So we've made communication with our staff that it, that it's not going to happen again. Part of the reason that they were driving across there is there is a trash can on the opposite side of the field in rec park. We have instructed our staff from now on, if they need to access that, they either will need to access it from Woods Drive, which is on the back, and they'll need to walk over there and grab it. Or there's actually a bed of gravel. It's covered with grass right now, but there's actually a bed of gravel which goes around the perimeter of the park. And the bed of gravel will be able to handle the, the weight of the truck as they go around and, and pick up the trash can there. We're looking at other areas, we're looking at potentially relocating it to make it easier to access from Woods Drive, but we're still trying to figure out what the best solution is, but regardless, our staff won't be driving through the middle of Recreation Park anymore.
Well, thanks.
Thank you. Is that it, Mr. Jones Chance?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, Mr. Wilcoxen?
Thank you. Does that also go for Candy Cane Park? Because that's been chronically a problem over there too with the trucks going across soft, soft land. Excuse me. I'm sitting here with my window open, and I heard the same car that I heard all day Sunday tearing around this part of town, and I could hear it turn around other parts of town too, because it's that loud. Uh, I wanted to commend the police department in that I was sitting at the corner of, of Mansfield and Grant Street, right at the entrance of Y-Hi, and I saw somebody run the stop sign, and I yelled at them, and two seconds later, the lights went on and, and they pulled them over. And my daughter lives at that intersection, so I was sitting there eating dinner with her, and, and low and behold, two more times during dinner, the police pulled people over for running that stop sign. But, you know, on Sunday, I noticed that, you know, there was a lot of racing going on, on Sunday. And I didn't hear anything, but tonight I could just hear the sirens following this car around by Huron River Drive and Superior Road and, and Cornell in that area, so. It's great that they're doing something about that, and hope, you know, I've had reports that, you know, the, the corner of Congress in, in Oakland has also been a sore spot for people running that stop sign at speed, at more than, more than the the speed limit. And so people working, were asking questions about the, the agreement we have with Eastern, and the Eastern Police Department has been stopping people at that. So I, I'm glad to see more of a presence of the police doing, doing that work, so just wanted to say thanks.
Thank you. Is that it? Okay, Mr. Morgan?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make this really quick. I just want to give a shout out to the War One cleanup day over at Park Ridge. It was, I got over there and got into the leaves. Everyone, thank you, everyone who helped, and thank you guys for organizing it. I wanted to, again, give a shout out, looking into the CIL, a lot of information in there, and it's really useful. I just, I'm grateful, I just want to give a shout out to the Fire Department. They do a lot of specialized training. I'm really impressed about how they stay consistent and keep up with very different forms of life-saving strategies, man, and methods. So I wish I could sit in on some of them, Chief. That's me asking a question, to be able to sit in on some of those. I would love to see it happen, but I, I, I think you do a great job of keeping your team updated and, and like I say, specialized, so that's really cool. And I do want to sit in, it's like a ride along, so, but go ahead.
I don't know, we can give you a ride along on a truck, but you're absolutely welcome to come up for some training sometime. Let me know.
Awesome. Start with CPR first aid. I go there. Thank you. Uh, I know we received eighteen applications, marijuana applications. I got a, how many? How many, like, how many can we have? Like, can we, can we have more than what we thought? Like, we, we received eighteen applications for how many spaces? Is it, is it just for three spaces? Okay, cool, all right.
Total.
Well, it's, it's three social equity retail. The other facility types, other than access grower, are, aren't capped, they're, they're limited through zoning. So there'll be a potential for more than three.
Yeah, because they just keep coming and growing, and I'm just wondering like, how? But I thought we had some cap, is anything?
Talking about retail, sorry?
Yeah, retail is capped at, at seven regular permits and three social equity, and access grower is capped at one.
Okay, all right. All right, and the last thing I want to say is about Y-PAC, although I did not make it to the last meeting, that was the transition that, um, and I wanted, I was saying Kathleen, but I believe Heather Berkowitz is the, the, um, the new chair of, of that, of Y-PAC. And, and Chief DeJuicy was absent, and I think Lieutenant Yu, I'm pronouncing his name right, Yu Haas, was sitting in for Chief DeJuicy, but, um, they did a letter of recognition for the former chairs, just to appreciate their service. And according to the, the notes, um, they rescheduled a meeting with David Fair from NPR, NPR, and the next meeting is April twenty-second. And, um, I don't have any more business. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Okay. Okay, that brings us to communications from the mayor, and I had on my list, and I will echo Mr. Morgan, on the cleanup at Park Ridge, it was, um, those, I want to thank all the council people that showed up and were working and cleaning, cleaning the park, and the park was, um, looked really good. And there was a group, oh, gosh, and I'm forgetting their name, they're not a, they're not a real club, but they're a group of motorcyclists that are friends of Mr. Williams, and several of them are, lived, were born and grew up here in the city, and they came and they, they bagged all of the leaves, and I don't know if some of you were there. I'm sorry, Ms. So, uh, Councilperson Somerville, did you have a chance? You moved on me, and I was.
Oh, sorry. I actually don't have anything to bring up, so it's totally cool. You can keep going.
Okay, I'm sorry, you moved on, because I was, I had my pattern, and then I just realized I was speaking, okay.
It's all good. I've been turning my camera off because the lighting in my living room is not great.
Okay, we see.
I'm all good.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yes, but they came, a group came, a cyclist came through. Uh, they were friends of Mr. Williamson, and they picked up and bagged all of the leaves. However, in talking with Mr. Williamson on yesterday, or at the Monday meeting, he spoke to the fact that, actually, I think it was on Monday morning, yesterday morning, that the park looked worse than it did uh, the day of, of the, once we got through cleaning up, or before the cleanup. And he's asking for, um, trash cans to be placed, an extra trash can at the pavilion, that the one, if there's a large crowd at the pavilion, that one trash can doesn't, will not handle it. And I noticed that a couple of years ago, my family had a used recreation park, and there had been, on a Sunday afternoon, and the, the group that had been there before, the day before, had lots of trash, and the one can just isn't enough to, so if we could maybe have at least two cans at all of the pavilions. And also, I know at Park Ridge, if we could have a trash can at the entrance there off of the parking lot on Harriet Street, by the Perry School parking lot, and also another trash can on the west end down as, at the entrance off of Armstrong. I think it would help, and not just, not just Park Ridge Park, but if we could look at the need for, if, see if there's need and determine if But if we could look at the need for, if, see if there's need and determine if there is need at our other parks around town. I don't know if, uh, I mean, I asked the two council people from Ward Three. How are trash cans at prospect? Are you in need of additional?
We always need more trash cans.
Okay. And the same at Candy Cane, Mr. Wilcox.
Well, actually, I would say, sorry to interrupt. The last time I was at Frog Island, I didn't see any trash cans at all, actually.
There's one missing from the tridge. Right behind the, uh, the amphitheater and right at the entrance to the tridge. There used to be one there and it, it disappeared a while ago.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Akers, if you could please, um, get us some trash cans. Would really, in our parks, we'd really appreciate it. Is that going to be, uh, is there an issue about that?
Well, we'll take a look and, and see, you know, which ones are, are missing and, and we'll, we'll, uh, we'll take a look at it.
Okay. Okay. And if we need to, if it's a matter of finance, maybe we can use some of that fifty thousand dollars you saved on the truck to purchase some trash cans for our parks. To keep them a little bit better. And I want to thank council again for your support on the resolution to make Juneteenth a, um, a solid holiday here in the city. I think it's, uh, as I said, it's something that's long past due. And I believe that it's going to, uh, be a real plus for our city. So. Uh, and, oh, again, um, what is the double trash day? I've had people asking and I had just forgotten it. It's coming up.
I don't have that date in front of me right now, but I can follow up with an email.
All right. If you would, I'd appreciate it. Okay. And if somehow we could maybe publish that again for, on Facebook or somewhere to get it out so that people, people know exactly when. All right. Thank you. That's all I have. For today.
Next item on the agenda is, uh, City Manager, uh, Communications.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I don't have any for tonight. Just going to prepare for budget. So we will be here presenting our departmental budgets, um, at the next.
And I do have one last thing. Thank you for that, uh, City Manager. I turned my book, notebook over and thought, on the call with, uh, the weekly call with Representative Dingle. We heard from, uh, Representative Donna Lipinski. And she was, uh, saying that there are millions of dollars sitting in Washington that should be being spent here in Michigan. That they're earmarked for Michigan. But the state legislature has not done what it needs to do to bring the money from Washington so that it can be used to help people here in Michigan. Some of it is for water, some of it is for rent. Uh, I can't remember the other things that money is sitting there, but it's to help our people here in Michigan. And it is needed. So, and she asked for the help of everyone on the call. So I asked her, what can we do to help? And she asked that we would, uh, that they needed people to reach out to Republican legislators. Uh, and just saying to them nicely that we need that money for our people here in Michigan and asking them to do what they need to do to get that money released. So I'm just passing that on to council. If you would reach out to your constituents, your residents, and whether they're Republican or Democrat, ask them if they know, uh, a Republican legislator. Or if they don't, they would get a name, um, from the list and reach out asking for, asking them to, uh, bombard Washington to release the money. And from what she said, Washington is ready and willing to release the money. But it's something that our legislature must do. But it will help people with the rent. It will help with, uh, water bills and any number of things here in Michigan that our people need help with. So I want to pass that on. Thank you.
Council, next item on the, uh, agenda is communications. There was, uh, the Government Finance Officers Associated D- Distinguished Budget Presentation Award was included. Also, just a reminder, the April thirteenth meeting will begin at six PM, as will the April twentieth meeting. And then the, um, May fourth and May eighteenth will also begin at six for budget.
Thank you. Is there anything else?
That is it. The next item is just adjournment.
Right. Is there anything else for the good of the, Mr. Jones Chance?
I, I do have a question, uh, you know, being new to council. I know that there was a policy about homeless encampments. That they wouldn't be torn down. And I, I think maybe that was over winter or I don't, I guess what I'm asking is, is it seasonal? And if so, is that something that we should, uh, re-up? Because, uh, I could not find the answer.
City Manager, do you have that answer for us, please?
I don't think that, um, the policy is, um, void. I think we still, um, acknowledge it. We have some, um, people on the Water Street property. I believe that we're trying to re-home so that some work can be done. And so I think we're still following.
Okay. So it's more or less permanent?
I'm sorry. What'd you say?
So it's, it's more or less permanent?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. And thanks for bringing that up because you reminded me of something. Uh, I'd like to ask that, um, we begin now to prepare for, um, emergency, uh, housing or whatever. Uh, winter, prepare for winter, winters can come again. And if we could do a better job of having, um, a, having warming centers open, uh, for those that will be in need of them. So if we could start now so that we're not caught as we were last year and, um, not able to find a place or really do what we could have done or need to do for those that will need warming shelters. So if we could, I'm just asking if staff could start working on that now. Thank you. Okay. If nothing else.
I have nothing but this. I just, the, the, I, I am so disgusted at these landlords and their salani. I'm just disgusted at how high the rent is for these riggity diggity things. It's, it's so hard for people. And I just wish we had a better communication from these landlords that demand so much money and so little, um, integrity. It's just, it's just putrid, but that's my rant. I'm sorry. I mean no harm.
And it's a legitimate rant. And one of the things that, you know, we could do, and Mr. Barker could correct me, but I do know that, uh, the Affordable Housing Group had spoken of in, in their report, rent control. We cannot do that as a city, but that can be taken to the state. So. What was that?
Yes, that is correct, Your Honor.
Yes. So, uh, Mr. Morgan, let's, uh, let's talk about that. And maybe talk with some of the people that were part of the Housing Committee. And, um, start working towards taking it to the state. We can't do anything here in the city, but something can be done. We just have to take it a step higher.
Thank you. Please forgive my rant, Council.
Oh, no. I mean, hey, sometimes things just have to come out and they come out for a good reason. So. All right. Um, seeing no other hands or anybody else got a rant? I'm gonna ask.
I second that rant.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Mr. Jones Chance, I was gonna ask Mayor Pro Tim to make that motion.
Night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, John Boy. Night, Chief.
Good night.